If you wish to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up on the sheet near the entrance door to the council chambers. You'll be called to speak during the public comment section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. Roll call, please. Don Williams is excused. Are the microphones on? They don't sound like they're...
I don't think so.
Can you clear the switch upward, please?
Switch is up.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call. Mayor Don Williams is absent. Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Chester Norakis?
Here.
Wes Ryan?
Here.
Susan Walke?
Here.
And Kip Ward?
Here.
Stand through the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Do we have mics? Yes, I hear. All right, the first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. I did submit a few typos to the city recorder for the March 14 meeting.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Next item is council deliberations for ordinance 2016-26 and ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title V Business Taxes, Licenses and Regulations, Chapter 5.14 Vacation Mental Dwelling License, Adding and Clarifying Health and Safety Occupancy Criteria to the VRD Licensed Provisions of the Code. Mr. Townsend, did you have any presentation to make? Mr. Appicello?
Well, I can tell you that what's in the packet is the occupancy provision that was what's in the ordinance draft 2016-26 is the version that was in the council communication from the last meeting where you had directed that the occupancy be removed from the ordinance and brought back in a separate ordinance. Now, the language that's in the current code is, you know, kind of like all run together. And what we did was we separated it out into some sub-paragraphs. And so that's the only difference between the language and the ordinance that's proposed. You could see the crossed-out language there for what's in the code. And then we broke it out so that it's a little clearer that there are separate issues with occupancy. In addition to that, and that language is basically the stats quote. So what we're currently doing is saying you will comply with the lodging house limitations. And included in that is the exemption for the July 2010. If you're constructed prior to July 2010, the 16 occupants doesn't apply to you. But as I had mentioned previously, the code isn't really clear that that's the case. So we had expressly wrote it out and put it in the text. And so you see the language there indicating that it has the 2010, June 30, 2010 exception. However, as I mentioned in the council communication both last time and this time, you all weren't exactly clear on that. So we anticipate further discussion about whether or not you're going to recognize that exception or say no exception. So it's 16 occupants or no exception or 16 occupants with the exception that if you were built prior to July 1, 2010, you're not required to comply with the 16 limitation. In addition to that, you would ask staff to identify some other options. And you see a November 18 memorandum from Mr. Chandler, which Mr. Townsend also worked on, and outlines some of the different options for occupancy regulation that you've previously discussed. In terms of perhaps moving this along, if you're looking at the occupancy language that's set forth in the draft ordinance, the real first question for you is whether or not to leave in the language after June 30, 2010. So overnight occupancy of a VRD structure constructed or converted to VRD use, basically shall not exceed 16 persons. If you want that to be without exception, then you would need to modify what is now, I think, paragraph B to say that. If you want to leave it with the exception, then the language there is appropriate. There are a couple of other issues that were presented in terms of a calculation of a numerical limit based upon the number of bedrooms or guest rooms or used rooms used for sleeping, depending on which jurisdiction you're looking at. But in the past, you've recommended two plus one. Two plus two has also been used, and three plus one has been suggested. So you would count the number of bedrooms or rooms used for sleeping or guest rooms, and then you would apply that and have a numeric number, but in all cases, not to exceed 16. And then occupancy limits for overnight occupancy based on fire code language. And that would be considering the VRD to be a lodging house. So you would say maximum overnight occupancy for a lodging house is subject to the limitations of the Uniform Fire Code, such other provisions as may be applicable. So you're basically saying it's not a single-family dwelling for purposes of maximum overnight occupancy and maximum building occupancy. Again, sometimes the fire code just generally doesn't apply to single-family dwellings. But if it's being used as a lodging house, you would say it does apply, and that 200-square-foot limit would kick in. So with those suggestions, it's up to you to provide direction. I think staff anticipated that you probably wouldn't be doing first reading tonight because we weren't really sure, but we tried to facilitate going forward by giving you some options.
Councilors, do we have...
Madam Chair, I guess I'd like to open discussion on exempting. Since this is a health and safety ordinance, I once again would raise the question of why a construction date would be of importance when it comes to the occupancy question. So I would be one to, you know, be interested in eliminating the exception of the June 30, 2010, thus reassuring the maximum, you know, in any residence would be 16.
Agreed.
But I'd be open to discussion on it as to if there's a counterpoint and reason.
Records.
Here we go. Okay.
If I could... Madam Chair, your discretion. One of the things that I've talked about with some of you is that existing code says 16 or lodging house limitation, but then it says exceeding the lodging house limitation may only be permitted if you retrofit to commercial standards, using the structural code. And that may only occur in commercial zones or such other zones that you designate. So while you have people that may not want to reduce their occupancy to 16, if you have an identified path to higher occupancy through appropriate rezoning and/or appropriate retrofit to the structural code, you lessen the impact of that regulation. And there's the one other thing you would need to look at is the effective date of this ordinance. You realize we're at the end of the year, the renewal applications for VRDs are going out. This is when people generally make their plans, their bookings into next year. So you might want to consider when this ordinance, if you were to go that way, would be effective. So two issues there. You know, what is the path to higher occupancy, both construction, commercial code, and land use, which, of course, the code currently says, in commercial zones or such other zones as you designate? And then the other issue would be effective date.
So can we do this one bite at a time? Before mixing all that other stuff in here? Yeah. All right. Well, I don't have... I mean, I just didn't want to confuse it. Yeah, it would be my opinion that that exception would not be warranted. I would just keep everything consistent and everyone in the same boat.
Is there anyone else who is interested in exploring the limitation of occupancy per cent to square footage? I think if we're going health and safety, complying with the Uniform Fire Code with occupancy makes sense to me.
Isn't that 200 square feet per person?
Yes.
Well, I'm actually interested in a change there rather than the straight 16 people. But I'd like to propose we look at the bedroom again and, you know, three per bedroom plus And quite frankly, because that with a... in the residential zone, again, it's five bedrooms residential, that would be back to the 16. So it'd be an appropriate way to get to the 16. But what it does for me, it then limits the smaller houses, meaning you can't squeeze 16 into a one-bedroom. But you'd have a one-bedroom, you'd have four. Three per bedroom plus one for the house. Two-bedroom would be, what, six plus one, so that'd be seven. And it kind of ratchets up to where you'd have five bedrooms for the 16.
And it's actually, I think it's up at the higher end of the scale for our competitors, competing cities. I think we're on the high end of the scale there, which is fine.
My concern with that is the definition of the bedroom.
Madam Chair, I went on to the Lincoln County property. As you well know, you're a record retriever. I went on to their website and brought up different houses. And every house that we brought up had how many bedrooms were there. So that's definitive. You can use that and say this is how many bedrooms you're going to get, because that's what's on the property tax.
Mr. Townsend? When someone comes to apply for a VRD permit, they write down the number of bedrooms they have. Is that checked with the tax assessor's records?
We don't check it with that.
Okay.
But they do have to write down the number of bedrooms, yes.
So you're taking their definition of what a bedroom is?
What we've done, yeah.
Yeah.
Would that be going forward? Because I guess it begs the question, I think, Madam Chairman, is that what your... is there any check and balance?
Right, right.
With the definition? Don't we also have inspections on these or...
Yes.
So at some point...
New ones, yes.
So in some point, wouldn't we be verifying whatever's on the application with...
Right. Right. We do inspect for that.
My other question for you, Mr. Townsend, was to confirm we currently require one parking space for every three occupants? Is that correct?
One parking space per bedroom.
Per bedroom, okay.
Which actually works out to one parking space for three occupants.
If you go that route.
If you go. Okay, thank you. Mr. Ryan, did you have any input?
No.
Okay. Chester Norakis?
I'm supporting... I would support the proposition that we use the formula three plus one per bedroom. Pardon me. Yes, three plus one. And I would also support the proposal to have no exceptions regarding the 2010 date.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. ...
Just a point of clarification. Mr. Appicello, you had mentioned something about the way around the 16 was in a commercial zone and retrofitted. That wording, am I not mistaken, is in or would be in the ordinance? Or does that need direction?
Well, the only part of which we need direction is or such other zones designated by council. So right now, it says commercial zones. And let me read it.
Commercial zoning districts or other such districts?
Yes. So I guess that doesn't express the list. You know, we moved, at least in prior years, we were listing all the zones that were considered commercial, I know in one of the prior amendments to clarify what is commercial, what is mixed use, what is considered commercial for purposes of VRD use. So I would think that at some point, the council should probably in the land use ordinance, list those VRD zones that are considered, well, places where VRDs are allowed, where you could exceed 16 with retrofitting to the commercial code. It would have to be a commercial or deemed commercial zoning district for purposes of VRDs. And that's probably appropriate places in the land use ordinance.
I think if you're going to go that route where you want to have that exception, which we have now, it'd be a good idea to designate them now rather than have to come back and revisit it.
The idea would be we hadn't actually said the VR zone in that list, but we had said, you know, essentially the commercial zones and the mixed-use zones. And VR was created as a mixed-use zone. So in those zones, you would be allowed. Now, there is a proposed land use amendment which would allow certain amount of full-time commercial VRDs in a R1-5 zone. That's not a commercial zone, but it would be amendment that would allow commercial permitted use. So you'd probably want to designate whether or not you were allowing that kind of retrofitting in that zone.
Madam Chair, I'm not clear on, you know, this is discussion. And I guess with these kind of proposed changes, even though there's an ordinance for later first reading, it'd be better to bring back a corrected ordinance? I guess that's what I mean.
For purposes of doing first reading, we can do first reading, and then I have to read every change out loud prior to second reading. Probably to avoid me reading, you would just want to give direction, and then we'll revise the ordinance. It'll be to you three days before the next meeting. It'll be, you know, available online, and we don't have to read every change then.
And then I guess the other one was then Mr. Townsend's recommendation, or I guess both, Richards, listing the zone, the commercial zones, to include it in both, the land use one that we've yet to come forth, but this one as well, the health and safety?
I'm not sure what we have to do with the land use one, but it would be easy in this one to say for the purposes of this section, the following zones are considered commercial or something like that.
So I would, if we'd consider a motion, I'd make the motion that we make changes, including those three suggestions. And the three suggestions...
Summarize those three questions.
Sure. The three suggestions would be to tie the occupancy to three per bedroom plus one for the house, no more than 16. And either somewhere in there or near there, identify the commercial zones where a higher limit could be had of occupancy with retrofitting. And then the third item would be to eliminate the use after VR use, VRD use after June 30, 2010, or constructed or converted. No eventual overnight occupancy of a VRD structure constructed or converted use after June 30. So that would be the eliminate that exception.
I would second that.
So three components to it.
Did you make the motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Discussion? I would like to... I would like to include a... As other cities have done, not count young children in that number. Yeah, I have some. Thank you.
Yeah, I would argue against that one because that came up as an idea when the limit was two per bedroom. And I think... But that's one of the reasons why I moved it up to three, so that you don't have to get into checking the birth certificates. And I think that's how I compensated for it rather than... So it's an easy look.
Get back behind that. And then I think we should also discuss an effective date.
Good point.
And also, is there... Did we formalize how it is that we're going to determine the number of bedrooms? Is it going to be via inspection? Or is it going to be via county tax records? Or is it going to be both? Or neither? Is that a decision that we make now, or is that a decision that Richard makes administratively?
It's generally been an administrative decision. There have been very few close calls. The question, I guess, maybe is you want to do per bedroom or, in other words, a room that is primarily designed primarily for use for sleeping? Or do you want to include any area where people sleep? What we have done is just count rooms that are used primarily for sleeping. Now, if you walk into it and you say that's a bedroom, that's clear. If you walk into it and it's a living room and has a height of bed, that's not a bedroom. That's been our practice in the past.
So it would be consistent then with the county tax rules?
Presumably.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and Madam Chair, a bedroom or even whatever definition you'd use for a bedroom would still have ingress egress.
Right.
Because it's the safety and soundness. So the garage with bunk beds wouldn't quite be considered a bedroom with no windows?
With no windows, no, it wouldn't.
But with windows, can you call that a bedroom?
Well, if it's... There are code issues, and they would have to comply with the building code issues in order to be safely used as a bedroom. But there are garages that have been converted to bedrooms legally. But, you know, the walk-in closet that's got a bunk bed in it doesn't count.
And it'd still be a max of five bedrooms in residential zones?
Right.
I mean, you just don't want...
If you're using the strict bedroom, you're designed primarily for uses of sleeping.
You just... You don't want an 800-square-foot house to be five bedrooms.
Somebody wants to do that, I suppose they can, or then they get run into housing code issues on the square footage and the number of people that can legally be in that room.
We currently have language about the Uniform Housing Code and 70 square feet for the first two occupants.
Plus 50 for each additional.
Yeah. And that would remain in effect, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
So what about the question of when into effect?
If I can give a little... My preference on that is we're going to send out the renewal notices this week. And so to avoid chaos, I want to... I would suggest that maybe we have it go into effect January 1 of 2018.
Would you like to...
I would amend my motion to include the effective date of January 1, 2018.
Okay.
Oh, well, that's amending, so you seconded it.
Please.
But no, Mr. Ward, I think, needs to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think you seconded the original motion, Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Will you second that amendment?
No.
Might I suggest that you deal with the motion you have and then maybe do a second motion on the effective date?
So we have a motion on the table to eliminate the exemption for structures built after July 1, 2010, to add zoning, specific zones that retrofitting to a higher occupancy would be allowed, and limit occupancy to three per bedroom plus one.
Right.
And those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Now she'll be exploring the effective date.
I'd still put a motion on the table, but, you know, and...
So what are we going to use until, for the next year in the meantime? Are we going to go back to accessory use and just run what we have going right now?
You'd have what's on the book now as far as occupancy, which still has the lodging house... house limitations, because again, this is just about health and safety, this is just the occupancy. So the part that, if you look on the draft ordinance, the part that's crossed out would be the part that stays in effect for now. You'd have this, you'd have the lodging house limitations with allowing retrofitting in
I just think a year is too long to wait, but I don't want to send the planning department into chaos. That's sure not my goal. But man, this thing's been dragging on forever and we need to pull this tooth and get going on more productive things. So that's my two cents, whether it'll carry or not, who knows? Also, I, you know, I really like the idea of using the county tax rules to determine how many bedrooms that each house, because I'm sure most people's word is good, but sometimes where money is involved, it's mostly good.
I understand. There'll be an interesting interplay between, people want to minimize the number of bedrooms that they have for parking space purposes. They want to maximize for occupancy, but you see what that stress does, so.
So right now, we're just taking their name for it though, or their word for it?
Well, again, with a new one, we go out and do inspections too.
Right. But on a renewal one, you don't?
No, but we already have inspected them.
Okay.
And actually, we're on a three-year re-inspection cycle.
Okay. That was it.
Do you have anything more on the year? Is there a compromise in between? I don't know what it does, it doesn't because of the annual licensing and that would be the ease and bookings?
Yeah, I think the whole bookings idea, and if we do it, say, July 1st, effective July 1st, I mean, that's when the season starts.
Right.
And so I think that's effectively making it effective now, in essence. And people have made, you know, commitments to rent their places for the coming year.
Well, this wouldn't affect anyone's reservations that they've already made. They get to hang on.
Unless you, it would if, unless you say it doesn't. And then how do we, how do we-
Yeah, how do you manage?
How do you manage that? I just-
I think if we give them a year, then that honors reservations that have already been made.
And they know, Madam Chair, if you go out a year, then at least they know what's coming up in that and they can plan accordingly. If they need to adjust their rates or whatever, they can, they're better, in a better position to take reservations for the following year. And a lot of people make reservations when they're, they come in in April and they'll make a reservation for the following April. So it's really good to have that information. So I think making it effective January 1st, 2018 is the smart way to do it.
I'm not sure we have a motion on that one.
I'd make that motion to make it effect, make it, once it's passed, ordinance to make it effective January 1st, 2018.
Second.
Further discussion? Okay. It's been moved and seconded to include in the proposed ordinance an effective date of January 1st, 2018. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Me.
Motion passes. Thank you. It was a good discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is that sufficient direction, Mr. Townsend?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
I just have one comment about the council communication dated today and Mr. Chandler's memo dated November 18th. Neither of them had page numbers on them and that makes it really hard when you print things out. So I'd appreciate page numbers on documents, please.
I need the public hearing sign-in, or the public comment sign-in sheet. If someone could bring it forward, please. Thank you, Mr. Townsend.
This is an opportunity for members of the audience to bring to the council's attention any item not listed on the agenda for public hearing or public comment. Comments are limited to five minutes per citizen and the city recorder will use the light system. Speakers may not yield their times to others and as a general rule, this is not a time for exchange of questions. At the conclusion of this agenda item, a counselor may discuss or raise questions regarding an item presented by a citizen. Council president has the authority to reduce the time allowed for comment in accordance with the number of persons present and signed up to speak. And I have four people on the list and they're all associated with a public hearing. So anyone else like to speak? Mr. Hoover? This is not about, yeah, thank you.
Jim Hoover. I'm a property owner in Lincoln City, have a business license in Lincoln City also. I'm becoming increasingly concerned as a citizen that there are items on the agenda that are being discussed before public comment, thereby eliminating the public's opportunity to express an opinion before you make a motion. The most recent thing, which you just did right before this public comment period, was make changes to an ordinance that you've been talking about for at least a year and maybe two or three years. I'm really surprised that some of you aren't looking up at me because I'm talking directly to you. So congratulations for circumventing the public process and at the last minute changing something that impacts a number of people in the city of Lincoln City who built their houses under a building code that allowed them to have more than five bedrooms and operated and applied for a vacation rental dwelling permit that allowed them to have more than five bedrooms, that you've now given them one year to change their business and change their business model. And so congratulations once again, it appears to me, Mr. Norieikis, Mr. Ward, Ms. Walke, Mr. Anderson, and Mr. Ryan, that you've done a good job of circumventing the people's wishes. I was here on a number of occasions and heard a lot of people come up and give a lot of public testimony. And it's made me wonder, when you're elected for office, are you elected to do what you want to do? Are you elected to do what a majority of the people want you to do? Or are you elected to do what you think the minority wants done? Because I've never heard a majority of the people propose what you guys passed tonight. This seems to be an agenda-driven item by one or more people on the council and it has been done in such a way that the public comment wasn't allowed beforehand and what appeared to be passed or appeared to be proposed, even at your last meeting, was changed at the last minute and then voted on. So the people of Lincoln City like this process. You know, they're your representatives, they come from your wards, and maybe people think that we vote people in to do what they want to do. But I was raised in a country where my representatives are there to represent the people that voted them into office. And I believe those representatives need to listen to those people and do what those people want, not do what you want for your own personal interests. Thank you very much.
Any other comments? I think I would just like to say that there were no decisions made here yet tonight. We just gave direction to staff. There will be a public hearing on that.
Okay.
Madam? I would just like to add that 2.04.0200 order of business, we are following the, our roll call, Pledge of Allegiance Consent Agenda, Council of Deliberations is next and then it's comments from citizens present. We are following the ordinances. Thank you.
All right. Our next item is a public hearing. Mike and Lila Bradley are the applicants to allow public testimony on the proposed land exchange of city property under the encroaching Elks Building now owned by Mike and Lila Bradley for private property over which the community center is accessed. Sorry, I have two scripts that are very similar and I want to make sure I have the right one. All right.
I have 921 square feet in a per-
Thank you, thank you. All right. It is now 6:46 PM. The public hearing is now open for the purpose of accepting public comment on a proposed property exchange between the city of Lincoln City and Michael and Lila Bradley for property located south of northeast 22nd Street, east of northeast Orr Place. The proposal is to exchange approximately 921 square feet of the city-owned property under the existing building for at least 920 square feet of land owned by the Bradleys. This hearing is held pursuant to ORIS 221.725, which states that any resident of the city shall be given an opportunity to present written or oral testimony at the hearing. Are there any objections to the council's jurisdiction? Counselors, are there any abstentions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest, personal bias, or ex parte communications?
Ex parte communication? On my part, I know the Bradleys, but I haven't talked to them lately about this.
I had an ex parte communication with Gary Ellingson and he started to discuss this and I simply told him that that would be ex parte communication, so the conversation-
Thank you.
Counselor?
Can you?
The, on an ex parte communication, a party would have the right to rebut. It doesn't sound like there was any substance conveyed and you pretty much stopped it, but would you agree, counselors, to the following statement? I have not prejudged this application. I'm not prejudiced or biased by any potential conflict, prior context, or involvement. I will make this decision based solely on the application of relevant criteria and standards to the facts and evidence in the record of this proceeding.
I would agree.
Yes.
Agreed.
After the staff presents a report, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If we have questions, your time responding will be counted in your time limit, will not be counted in your time limit. Staff have a report? Mr. Townsend?
I, I suppose I can, I can do it.
Okay, thank you.
So, counsel, there is a proposed land exchange of 921 square feet from Mike and Lila Bradley. This is, again, a public hearing under 221.725. The background is essentially that there's an Elks Building that existed, has existed for quite a while and that encroaches on city property to the extent of 921 square feet. The community center access drive off of northeast Orr Place actually drives through Elks, former Elks property. The land exchange has been advertised to basically exchange the encroaching property under the building for equal amount of property in the area of the access drive. The city contracted with an appraiser to obtain relative values for purposes of this exchange. And this is because the, the city cannot exchange property unless it is for equal value, equal or better value. And, or, actually technically, you can exchange property for furtherance of the public interest or sell or convey property for furtherance of the public interest, but you don't generally do that unless it's for equal or better value. So you would ask for this public input on this and any resident can give you input. The findings are required under Oregon law. In addition to having a public hearing and setting forth the appraisal information, the council would need to find that either it furthers the public interest to engage in this exchange or the exchange is for equal or better value. Generally, you can make a finding of it is not needed for public use or furtherance of the public interest. And if it's not needed for public use and you want to exchange it, it needs to be for equal or better value. So I guess the, I should disclose that we did receive the appraisal information and copies of the appraisal are in the back of the room and they're entered into the record. A copy was given to the city recorder. Copies were provided to the council this afternoon when it was received and the statute requires that it be entered into the record at the, at the public hearing. I don't really want to get into reading the appraisal out loud. Again, copies are available in the back of the room, but the conclusion of the appraiser was that the 921 square feet under the building, in exchange for the 921 square feet in the area of the access drive, he indicated, "I find there is no measurable use-value difference between the two triangles and conclude that the proposed swap is equitable to both parties." So basically, he's finding that it's equal or better value to cure the encroachment. Again, the suggested findings and, you know, I had to give you guidance as to how to analyze this. And so essentially, the question for you is, does it further the public interest to do this exchange? And does it, if it's not necessary for public use, is the exchange for equal or better value? So certainly the evidence in the record from the appraiser is that these parcels are essentially equal in value, which may lead you to make findings. As proposed, the draft document that was in the record, again, has several blanks in it because we did not have dollar figures. We still don't actually have dollar figures for the properties, but we have a conclusion that they are equal in value. So that the operative language here of is it equal or better value is addressed by the appraiser's report. So there's no need for additional property to be added to this exchange or for cash to be paid to make the exchange equal. Again, my council communication on this simply says a public hearing is required. It is, you are not required to exchange this property. In terms of it being quasi-judicial, it's quasi-judicial because if you decide to grant the exchange, it needs to be equal or better value. So someone could say it's not equal or better value and I'm challenging it on that basis. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Questions for Mr. Apacholo?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Apacholo, I notice as stated, you same square footage for same square footage, but is there a way in this exchange to have the city buy more the entire entrance off Orr into the community center?
Well, that wasn't, yes, you can require or request that we get additional value for this. So we'd have to hear from the applicant about what their position is. There is a separate exchange where the city is being offered an easement over the remainder of the, of the access. So again, equal or better is what is required. You are not required to enter into this, to do this. If you want better than equal, you could request additional land in the area of the access easement. You could indicate, basically, you would approve it with the following additional property being added. And if the property isn't added and they don't agree to those terms, then- terms, then the exchange does not go forward.
And if I can, Madam Chair, if the exchange doesn't go forward, then is it spoken, or without speaking it, or does someone have to remove the building from the city land?
Well, right now, the way the city has addressed encroaching buildings onto city property or city right-of-way is that they are typically required to enter into a license agreement and pay, based on some square footage formula, planning puts together a fee for the encroachment. And so if they, we have examples of this, where we have porches and things like that encroaching onto city property, and the property owners have been required to get a license and pay. I think a couple of years back, we brought one to you because they stopped paying because it was a foreclosure, and we basically said, if we're going to cut the porch off, or you're going to start paying again, and they started paying again. Of course, the other alternative is to bring an action to remove them from the property, but that's generally not what happens in an existing building.
Madam Chair, I guess, I'm...
I just want to remind you that we, this is a public hearing, so we need to take public input before you...
Yeah, I guess that's, I'm just looking for alternatives. I do not, I'll reserve...
I did forget one important step in the public hearing process. Question, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a counselor to participate in this matter? Okay, thank you. The people who have signed up, Mr. Warner?
My name is Jerry Warner, and I live at 1233 Lakewood here in Lincoln City. On May 24th, 1950, A.C. Curtis, the same person that Ballfield's named after, sold two parcels of property to the city for a dollar. It was sold to Ocean Lake, which in turn was transferred in 1965 to Lincoln City. It appears these properties is where the community center and parking lots are now located. According to county records, a declaratory deed restriction was placed on the property, which I will read a portion of it. It is in the intention of the grantor herein, and the purpose of this deed to dedicate said parcels of real property for a public park for the use and benefit of the public forever. To have and to hold in the above described and grant or premises for the use and the benefit of the public and said grantor, its successors, and assigns forever. A.C. Curtis does covenant with city that he will, and his heirs, executors, and administrators shall warrant and forever defend the above granted premises and every part and parcel thereof against all lawful claims and the demands of all persons whomsoever. It was recorded May 25th, 1950, which basically means that any of that property that was turned over cannot be sold, leased, rented, because it is exclusive use of the public. Over the years, I've seen the city make questionable decisions that affect the citizens of this community. For this council to attempt to give a portion of the above property to a business which is owned by a city employee is in violation of the restrictions which were placed on it when the city accepted the property. Further, the available parking does not meet the current needs of the community center now, so exchange a portion of the parking is beyond common sense. This city does not need another piece of surplus property. The city already has 304 properties, and about 30% of them are surplus. If the city were to grant the property exchange, this would easily increase the value of that Elks Building and the parking lot to $1 million in a few years. The Bradleys were fully aware of the parking issues. Do you believe that somebody else could have walked into the city and said, hey, I want to buy a part of your parking lot at the swimming pool, and they'd have got by the first no? If this city approves this exchange, an ethics complaint will be filed with the state, for sure. On a recent visit to the senior center, I was discussing the parking issue with several members. I was told that they had paid for and installed a sign that would say, parking for seniors only. This was done as many members have difficulty in walking. The sign was in the small lot that is at the southwest corner of the building, 13 parking places.
Mr. Warner, we're not addressing the parking issue at this point.
Well, it's part of the property.
That's the next hearing.
Okay, well, I'll bring it up to next hearing. I'll be right back up here.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Mike and Lila Bradley, did you wish to address the council? Okay, thank you. And Mr. Hoover, no, you're not a resident of the city, and this is for city residents, so you need to return to your seat, Mr. Hoover. Your testimony is not allowed during this hearing.
Madam Chairman, for eight years...
Mr. Killian?
As a property owner of the City of Lincoln City, as a taxpayer of the City of Lincoln City...
This is a special hearing.
I have had the opportunity, and I would like to protest the fact that now that I'm speaking about something regarding the city and a city employee, you're saying that I'm no longer qualified to speak.
No, this is a land exchange, and it's open to hearing.
And I'm a taxpayer in the City of Lincoln City.
You're not a resident.
I own property in the City of Lincoln City, and I've never been told you have to be a resident in order to speak at a public hearing.
That's what the script says, as a resident, so thank you for your input.
Well, once again, the citizens of Lincoln City are, and the property owners of the City of Lincoln City are being stopped from speaking.
You may leave.
So, good job.
The podium, thank you. So anyone else wish to speak who's a resident of the city? There's no further testimony, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing and the record?
So moved, second?
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing and the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
You know, I would just have one, Mr. Appicello, Madam Chair. Mr. Warner brought up the original provisions, or some provisions of the original purchase, or gift, or sale of the land. I would assume, an exchange, you know, just looking at the nature of this one, and, you know, he testified far beyond, but just the land that's under the corner of the building, I don't know if the Elks Building was there first, or was there when it was sold?
I can tell you that in the proposed findings, it says, the real property exchange is subject to county, state, and federal approvals, if any, needing to address deed restrictions or conditions of acquisition. It also says, the real property exchange is subject to closing and provision of clear title for both parcels. If the deed restriction is not satisfied by the exchange of equal value, then this will not go forward. If you would like me to give you a legal opinion about whether or not this is really feasible to have it set aside, then you would continue this deliberation to a future meeting, and I'll give you legal advice on that. This, of course, expected there was some limitation, but I didn't even have the title report at the time this was drafted, so.
Madam Chair, the only concerns I have, again, is in this transaction, if it was to go forward, I would like to perfect the entrance or access off Orr for the community center. This exchange would just give a small window from, in that entrance, and I know the other half is in another transaction, but I'd like to see it all, you know, in this. I think it behooves both parties, benefits both parties, getting the land under the building owned by the same people, and certainly gives the city control of the entrance off Orr.
Off Orr?
Yeah, excuse me, Orr.
Yeah, I would like to see the city having ownership of the entire access there.
I don't know when and how that's negotiated, other than we make a subject to?
I think you would, you would make a motion saying that the proposed exchange is acceptable, provided additional property constituting the remainder of the travel lane. There's two travel lanes there. One is included in the exchange, the other is not. If you made that motion directing staff to bring back findings, reflecting that modification, and reflecting clarification on the deed restriction, that there's no, that it can be removed, it's really a question of whether or not the equal exchange will satisfy that value. Normally, it is. In every exchange I've come across where there was a restriction to public use, if equal or better value was provided, it was satisfied. But I don't want to speak out of term, so I can fold that into the findings, if you'd like, give that direction. Obviously, you have draft findings here, so you would want to modify the exchange to be greater value received by the city, and you'd want a clarification that the, it is feasible to remove the restriction, or replace the restriction with a restriction on the newly acquired property.
I saw moved, second?
There's a motion and a second?
You ought to repeat that motion.
To include the access off Orr in the property acquired, in the land exchange, and to change the deed restriction from the property under the...
Well, to obtain a feasible, to obtain maybe a more definite decision about whether or not it can be relieved.
Okay.
Whether the restriction can be removed and replaced on the...
On the other...
On the other acquired parcel.
Thank you. Discussion.
I'm sorry, does anyone else, on their copy? I'm having a terrible time reading which color means what. I don't know whether it's just my glasses, or...
I can't read that either.
What's the red color?
I'm sorry, what are you looking at?
There's a legend here.
Page three.
Page three, and we're looking at the Orr, the Orr, the Orr access, and I'm seeing three colors, and I don't have a clue of what three colors are.
And you're looking at the map that's associated with the public hearing on the parking, not with this. The red is the triangle being exchanged for the orange triangle for this public hearing. If you're looking at the map for the parking lot, then it's the red triangle in the area of the Orr entrance for the orange triangle, which is underneath the building.
I have a question about setback for that building. How much setback is required from the driveway to the building there?
Well, I believe, if it goes forward as a rezoning to general commercial, I don't believe there's any setback, but I need the planning department to tell us that, and the record's closed.
I just wouldn't want to encroach in their setback with our driveway.
So, yes, you wouldn't want to create, well, you wouldn't want to completely cure the encroachment, but not, but still create a setback violation, is what you're saying.
Right, right.
You could direct that if additional land needed to be added to the property received in order to address setback, make it legal, you could do that. It would, of course, it would be more conforming if the property is exchanged than before, but obviously, it's not even on property owned by the applicant.
Right, right. Okay, any further discussion? Got the motion? Okay.
So the council, I take it the direction would be to return with findings for approval, with the caveat that the deed restriction be addressed with some further clarification, that it's capable of being removed with this exchange, or, and/or replaced with the restriction on the new property, and also to address the addition of the additional travel lane off of Orr. And then, those findings would be available for action, it's approval of findings, fact, conclusions of law, and order. It would go to the next council meeting, so if you want to clarify, that it would be brought back at the next meeting.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, hearing none, motion passes. Thank you.
And I just want to point out that the script says, any resident of the city may comment, and that's because ORS 221.725 says, any resident of the city shall be given an opportunity to present written or oral testimony at the hearing. So it's not just the script that says it, it's 221.725.
Right, thank you. I assumed it was based on an ORS, but I didn't know which one.
Madam Chair, Mr. Appicello, do we need a motion to continue deliberations?
Please.
I'd move that we continue deliberations to December 12, 6:00 PM, council chambers.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to continue deliberations to December 12?
Yes.
6 o'clock, council chambers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. All right, we have another public hearing. It is now 7:15 PM. The public hearing is now open for the purpose of accepting public comment on a proposal to exchange or sell an interest in real property owned by the City of Lincoln City. The city-owned land is generally known as the community center parking lot. The proposal is to convey to Mike and Lila Bradley a non-exclusive parking easement over a portion of the city's parking lot. In exchange for the shared parking, the Bradleys will grant to the city an easement off northeast Orr Place over the north lane of the community center entrance drive. The city will also receive other consideration, which the staff will discuss during this hearing. This hearing is held pursuant to ORS 221.725, which states that any resident of the city may be given an opportunity to present written or oral testimony at the hearing. Are there any objections to the council's jurisdiction? Counselors, are there any abstentions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest, personal bias, or ex parte communications?
Same as the last one, same ex parte... Same as the last one, same ex parte contact.
Can you repeat it again, please, for the record?
Yeah, I was engaged in a conversation with Gary Ellingson, and he had an opinion, and I just told him that that would be ex parte contact, and the conversation ended.
Thank you.
I guess I can assume that Wes Ryan has the same ex parte they disclosed at the last meeting, the last meeting, hearing. And would both counselors agree to the statement you agreed to previously regarding basing your decision based upon the facts and evidence here at this hearing?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Aye.
Ex parte?
Yes.
Do you agree?
Yes.
Thank you. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a counselor to participate in this matter? Mr. Warner? The challenger must present facts demonstrating actual bias or prejudgment.
Mr. Counsel, Jerry Warner, live at 1233 Lakewood. At the last council meeting, Chester Norakis said that Lila Bradley was a good city employee, and she and her husband had been in business for a long time in the community and should get preferential, he didn't say preferential treatment, but basically he's using her being an employee of the city and being in business as a criteria for a hearing, and that is not correct. Also, Susan Welke, you did not declare that you had worked for the law firm that Joan Chambers was a partner of, and Joan Chambers represents the Bradleys.
Counselors, if a counselor is challenged for bias, prejudgment, ex parte contact, or other reason, the challenger, which may include another city counselor, must present facts demonstrating actual bias or prejudgment. After a challenge, the council will vote on the counselor's participation. So you had basically two counselors challenged by Mr. Warner. If the counselor, if the challenged counselor will participate, the counselor would read the statement, which I'll ask you to agree to, so you don't have to read it. Now, you need to discuss among yourselves whether or not you believe that the two challenged counselors are capable of making a decision based upon the facts and evidence presented at this hearing and not based upon the alleged bias. So you might want to hear from the counselors that are challenged and then make a vote, and then I'll ask you to read if in fact you go forward.
Would you like to make a statement?
I did make the statement that Lila Bradley is a trusted and long-term employee of the city, and I did not imply that that had anything to do with the criteria for the hearing.
What else could you expect?
Sorry, Mr. Warner, this is our discussion now. I worked for Joan Chambers nine years ago, I didn't feel that was relevant.
So at this point, you would make a decision on the participation of the two counselors, so it asks that the, ask the question whether or not Counselor Norakis can participate, and then ask the question Counselor Welke can participate, and vote on it.
So who else to ask the question?
Someone would make a motion saying yes or no on participation.
I'd make the motion that both Counselor Norakis and Counselor Welke would be able to participate in this discussion and hearing.
I would second that.
Is the motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll recuse myself, I guess.
I'll ask the counselors, would you agree with the following, the challenged counselors, I'll ask you the following statement for the record. Would you agree to the following? "I have not prejudged this application, and I am not prejudiced or biased by any potential conflict, prior contacts, or involvement. I will make this decision based solely on the application of the relevant applicable criteria and standards to the facts and evidence in the record of this proceeding." Would you agree?
I agree.
Agreed.
Thank you. I think that disposes of the bias challenge.
Thank you. All right, after the staff presents a report, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If you have questions, your time responding will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, we had a sign-in sheet, and I will ask after, at the time if there's anyone else. Will the staff please present its report?
I suppose this is me again.
Yeah.
And just for the record, I think that Counselor Norakis, I think you're, I don't know if you, wasn't looking up, so I don't know if you voted on that, but I think that it'd be appropriate for you to recuse yourself on the vote, on the participation. I don't know if you voted or not, but I...
I did not.
Counsel, we have a public hearing on a land exchange, but it's not like the last one where you were talking about fee interest in property. It's not the entire property, it's just an interest in city property. And this interest is a non-exclusive easement which is proposed. That is, they'd have the right to use the parking, but not the right to exclude people from the parking lot. That would probably be the easiest way to explain it. They'd have a proposed easement that would give them the right to use the property, but not the right to exclude people. And the basis for that would be that their proposed hours of use would not necessarily match the community center's proposed hours of use. So the proposal is that the applicant would obtain a non-exclusive parking easement over 38,166 square feet of the community center parking lot in exchange for an easement over a portion of the Oak Place access, which will be given to the city, and the construction of parking lot improvements with a total estimated value of $192,000. So on the city's side of the scale, the easement over the parking lot for at least the northeast portion of the parking lot would go to the applicant, and the city would receive an easement over the Oak Place access, which you just discussed in the prior public hearing, and a construction of parking lot improvements, which the applicant estimated at $192,000. Now, staff has requested that an engineer outside of the city weigh in on the applicant's estimate, but unfortunately that review of the applicant's estimate has not yet been performed. It's been asked for, but we have not received a review by an engineer from another city. The, in terms of background, the Elks Building was purchased by Mike and Lila Bradley, who are doing business as an entity called The Beach Club, and there was an informal parking lot agreement with the Elks. There was never any easement or lease or written agreement indicating the, authorizing the extent of the use or duration of the use or compensation for use of the lot by Elks. But with the change in ownership to a for-profit entity as opposed to a not-for-profit, we cannot provide for free use of a parking lot by a for-profit entity. The only way to accommodate their request is to advertise this exchange and to obtain equal value or better value. The, the city advertised this broadly in the sense that not only did we advertise an easement, but we said that as a fallback, the council could provide for a lease as opposed to an easement. Obviously, an easement is a recordable interest in land that would run with the land. A lease, obviously, not the same as an easement, and not as valuable. The, again, an appraiser was retained to come up with an estimated values, and you have received that today, and copies are again available for the public in the back of the room, as was the prior hearing. The information from the appraiser was essentially that the value received by the applicant, if this was a, if this was an easement, would be $190,000, and that the value, if it was a lease, would be, a 20-year lease, would be $95,000. The value offered to the city for the easement over the access is listed as $11,600, and for the purported value of the improvements that are offered, by at least using the applicant's estimate, is $192,000. So the value to the property owner as an easement would be $190,000, the value to the city would be $192,000 plus the $11,600. So there would be greater value to the city than to the applicant. Like the last application that Mr. Warner commented upon, the deeds may be an issue, and the proposed findings reflect that. To condition the, any order, any findings, fact, conclusions, law, and order on this matter would reflect the conditions that I read earlier in the prior hearing, that they'd be subject to county, state, federal approvals, if any, to address deed restrictions and conditions. Also, the real property exchange is subject to closing and provision of clear title for any interest conveyed. Obviously, the, if there is a restriction that cannot be removed, it would be, it would not go forward. Again, as with the prior item, it may be necessary to, if you are going to go forward with this, to condition it such that that issue can be addressed. Probably, you should also address in your deliberations, when you get to it, the issue of a lease versus an easement, and the public, of course, can also comment on that as well through the process. Again, this is a draft council communication with, well, it's a council communication with draft findings attached in order to try to guide you in terms of your analysis of this. What's required in order to, for you to approve would be a finding that the exchange furthers the public interest, or that the property is not necessary for public use, or not necessary for public use at this time, and therefore that a lease could be approved if it wasn't necessary for public use at this time. Again, this is a public hearing, you'll need to take comment and then talk about it.
Mr. Warner, would you like to come speak about the parking issue?
Name is Jerry Warner, live at 1233 Lakewood. On a recent visit to the senior center, I was discussing parking issues with several of the members. I was told that they had paid for and installed a sign that says, "Parking for seniors only." This was done as many of the members have difficulty in walking. This sign was in the small lot that is southwest corner of the building. The city manager, excuse me, the center manager, Gail Kimberling, told the seniors that the parking lot belonged to the community center and to remove the sign, someone removed the sign. She told them that the parking places were needed for swim meets as there isn't enough parking available for vehicles, as it is. Here are some facts about the community center. City administration claims that more attendance is needed to use the facilities in order to reduce operating costs. In the budget year 1516, $100,000 was approved for water features to increase the pool use. In fact, they ended up buying a huge TV screen. They approved $7,000 for a sign on Highway 101 to attract visitors, and over $34,000 was budgeted to promote the center over two years. The city claims that 92,000 visitors come to the community center annually, annually, excuse me. Curtis Ballfield utilizes the same lot and attracts large tournaments that fill the parking lot. Where are the people going to park? To give up parking spaces is totally irresponsible. The only comparison I can think of is if this city owned an airport and they sold off part of the runway. I absolutely cannot see how you can even consider leasing or any of that property because the city needs it, and as time goes on, it's going to increase completely. The city's trying to get more people to use it, and you're trying to reduce the parking places. If you went by there last Wednesday, you'd have seen there was a meet going on, and the parking places were totally filled. I rest my case.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Mr. and Ms. Bradley, did you wish to speak at this time?
Good evening. I'm Lila Bradley. I live on Anchor Avenue in Lincoln City. Just need your name. Yeah, thank you. So in our, in our proposal, it seems like there's a part of this that's missing, and that's, you know, that we're adding 135 more parking spaces. And many of them are ADA, so they're ADA accessible. You'll be able to walk through from one line, it makes it safer as far as access in on Oak Avenue, and so it adds, I think, a total of nine more ADA spots right in front of the community center, right next to the sidewalk. So the plan adds more, a substantial amount more parking than, than what is there now? It overdoubles the parking.
That was just sort of redesigned, the way the parking lot is laid out right now. It is in, really not put together well. So at our expense, we went ahead and redesigned, redrew, and added 134 more parking spots in the same area.
With 24-foot travel lanes coming in off of Oak, and so those are... What do you want to say about that, Mike? Want to say more about that? It's, I can't, it's a question, something. So it's a huge improvement.
How many parking spaces are there now?
About 100.
And you're going...
I think 118, I believe, is what it's...
And you're going to increase them to how many?
134.
You're adding 134 more?
Yeah, we're adding approximately 130 additional parking just by restriping and utilization of the area that's there.
Will it go from 130 to 248?
I believe it is 248 to 246.
And in the, in the building itself, we have two racquetball courts.
Mike, when you speak, you need to pull that over and talk.
Thank you. We're told they can't hear you at the back of the room.
So, you know, we believe it'll be a big benefit to the citizens of Lincoln City. They'll have access to two more indoor racquetball courts with basketball, and they also have, you know, you can also mark those for pickleball. It's a lot of added, added parking. And the parking lot, you know, you do have your swim meets, and it's empty probably 80% of the time.
I'm sure over the years... I'm sure over the years, with council, obviously, with the addition of the building that did encroach on city property, they had to give them a permit to build that building, knowing that it was on their property at some time, and I believe that was around nineteen eighty is when that building was built, not that many years ago.
The additional part of it, for the racquetball courts.
And that's the piece that is encroaching on city property.
So it's, it's a large improvement.
I had a, a question. Last summer or spring, there was a non-conforming use continuation hearing in, before the planning commission, and your attorney referred to a nineteen eighty-two parking arrangement agreement. Did you ever see a copy of that?
I'm, I brought some information with me on a disc, but, okay. I don't know if I have, if I have that. I have, I have quite a few letters, and those were in that non-conforming, the appraisal of the property that was done in twenty twelve, or two thousand, two thousand and one? I can't remember now. Anyway, that one had all the letters of the council, you know, speaking about, about the parking arrangement.
Okay.
That they have with Elks.
And it's always been referred to in many, many council reports, and have been referred to as the Elks parking.
Right. That's a, it's gonna be a benefit to the city as far as having more jobs to the citizens of Lincoln City. And so all of the people we've talked to are really excited about it. There's, you know, very, very few that aren't, but.
There's always a few.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other member of the audience wish to speak on the proposed part? Excuse me. Mr. Hoover, you're not a resident. This is another case pursuant to ORS two-two-one point seven-two-five, where to hear resident testimony.
Madam Chair, you just asked, was there anybody else in the audience that wanted to speak? So I came up.
Okay.
I'm a property owner in the city of Lincoln City. I pay taxes in the city of Lincoln City. Those taxes go to provide services, and as a property tax owner, I, along with the rest of the property owners in the city of Lincoln City, who may not reside in the city, but pay taxes to support the community center in Curtis Field, I believe deserve a voice.
If you want to change ORS, two-two-one point seven-two-five, then there are other avenues to do that.
If you want to deny me, you can deny me, but I'm gonna stand here or sit here as a property owner. So if you're telling me I'm not entitled to it.
Hoover, thank you.
Am I not entitled to speak?
No, you're not.
Thank you.
Okay, no further testimony, there's a motion to close public hearing in the record.
Counsel, you may wanna, depends on whether or not the question you asked of the applicant and for additional information is something you want to get into the record. So if, you might take them separately, close the hearing, and then talk about closing the record.
I'd move to close the hearing. Second?
Been moved and seconded to close public hearing, any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, the hearing is closed.
So do you want to address the record open?
Yeah, I, I would like to see a parking agreement, if there is one.
You're talking about the reference nineteen eighty-two agreement? Okay.
I, I guess it is with a nonprofit, and that might not really be relevant. But, but it's the pleasure of other members, do you like to see that?
I, I think the point that you raised, the fact that it's a nonprofit versus a private enterprise, is significant.
Yeah.
So I'd, I'd move to close the record. Second?
Been moved and seconded to close the record. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes, thank you.
I apologize. I had mentioned earlier that the review of the estimate has not been received. We had requested that another city engineer review the estimate, so if you'd like to receive that into the record before you go forward, you might want to reopen the record and allow that to be received. Sorry.
I would like to receive that. And therefore move to reopen the record. Second?
Been moved and seconded to reopen the record.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Is, can you open the record for just that? The inclusion of just that, or do you have to open the record period? I'm just curious.
Well, this isn't a land use proceeding, so we're not subject to the procedural requirements of that Oregon land use law. So I think you can specify for what purpose you're opening the record. It doesn't have to be, like in land use proceedings, open for anything. So it's up to you. I think you just need to reflect that in your motion.
So do you want, the question is, do you want the motion amended, to just take the information, and what was the information?
From the engineer.
From the engineer?
A, a city engineer not employed by the city.
But we did receive some evaluations in the appraisal, didn't we?
No, the appraiser indicated that he understood that a separate, non-city employee engineer would be reviewing and commenting upon the engineer's cost estimate that was in the submission. He did not review the engineer's cost estimate critically, he wasn't charged with that. Another city engineer has been asked to do that and submit it, it has not been received. So what you would be doing would be reopening the record to receive a review of the engineer's cost estimate submitted by the applicant, and you would just need to provide for time to do that, probably two weeks would probably be prudent. As Mr. Townsend had communicated to me, that he just got in touch with the guy, returning phone calls, such, so it hasn't been done.
Is it likely to happen in the next two weeks?
I think we can request it.
Yeah.
It's up to you. If you wanted to leave the record open until the next council meeting, and then deliberate at that time, you could do that.
So moved.
Been moved.
What happened, the first, are, are you amending your motion, your first motion?
My first motion is to leave the record open to receive the engineer's report. So I'll, I'll restrain myself on the second motion here.
Be sure, a sec. There's a second? Yeah. Because that's the same, same motion, correct, that we had?
The only, the only issue is to what date you're leaving it open.
Okay. December twelfth, six o'clock, council chambers.
Okay. So it's been moved and seconded to leave the record open for the report from a, an engineer not employed by the city? Record to be left open until?
I believe the motion was to reopen the record, and then to set the time for submission as July, or December twelfth.
December.
At six PM for submission of the engineer's report, review of the engineer's cost estimate.
Correct.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, record will be left open for the purpose of receiving that engineer's report.
So it, it probably would be premature to, and go into any deliberations at this point. You might want to continue deliberations to December twelfth.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to continue deliberations to December twelfth. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes. You were trying to?
I was trying to have a discussion.
Oh, excuse me.
Rewind it, or am I just out?
What would you like to say, Mr. Warner?
Well, I was just wondering if there was any work that we could do on it. This is dragging out a long time for the Bradleys, and that was all, if the answer to that is no, there's no work we can do on it until the twelfth, and that's fine too.
I think it was the agreement that we needed, that piece, in order to discuss more. All right, ready for the third public hearing of the night?
Counsel, I'm just gonna say that you've continued it to allow for, not continued, but you left the record open to allow for the submission of the review of the engineer's cost estimate. That goes to value, so I would think that it might be appropriate to allow members of the public to comment as to that review. So, while earlier you asked the very pertinent question, whether or not it was okay to restrict it, I think yes, but the restriction would be to comment on, to receive it, and then to allow people to comment on it. So I'm afraid that you might want to redo the motion to clarify that people can comment on the submission of the estimate.
What form would that comment take?
It would have to be in writing.
Okay.
And obviously, people can check to see if the estimate has been submitted, and then submit comments on the estimate. I, I'm just looking at the idea here that we have a restriction that there is, the exchange may not be for less than equal or better value, and that's precisely what the public is invited to, the public, the residents are invited to come and comment on. So I would think it would be fair to allow comment in writing on the estimate once it's received.
Would that be part of next meeting's packet? How would public receive that?
Well, the public could, I guess we can make it available for the public to review when it comes in. It's not like it would be a confidential document. So it'll be available to check with the planning department if, if it's been received, and then they can submit comments on it. I just want to provide an opportunity to comment on value.
Appreciate that.
So you might need to do a motion to reconsider, or just do a new motion that says that you would allow written submission of comment on the, on the engineer's estimate prior to the next meeting.
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to allow comment on that engineer's report that we're waiting for until?
In writing.
In writing, until December twelfth.
Submit it to, to staff before the council meeting on December.
Prior to the council meeting on December twelfth. Thank you. All right, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. It is now seven forty-nine PM. The public hearing is now open for the purpose of accepting public comment on a proposed property exchange between the city of Lincoln City and Saint James Episcopal Church. The proposal is to exchange a four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five square foot area proposed as a street vacation, commonly known as Northeast Twenty-Fifth Street, for two easements and one parcel of land. This hall, hearing is held pursuant to ORS two-two-one point seven-two-five, which states that any resident of the city shall be given an opportunity to present written or oral testimony at the hearing. Are there any objections to the council's jurisdiction?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr.?
I refuse myself from this, as I have done all along.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Are there any other abstentions or disqualifications based on conflict of interest, personal bias, or ex-party communications? Seeing, hearing none. Does any member of the audience wish to challenge the qualifications of a counselor to participate in this matter? Hearing none. After staff presents a report, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If we have questions, your time responding will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, I think there's a sign-up sheet at the entrance. Please speak directly in the microphone, and begin by saying your name only. If you have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy of the recorder. Will the staff please present its report? Mr. Appicello, are you the reporter again?
Yes, apparently. Counsel, what we have is a proposed land exchange. This land exchange is four hundred, four thousand seven hundred and seventy-five square feet of city property for approximately five thousand square feet of Episcopal Church property, together with five thousand ninety-two square feet of access easements in the city's favor. As with the prior hearings, the appraisal report has been submitted to the city recorder, and I'll just summarize, and copies are available in the back of the room. And as with the prior matters, the appraiser has offered his opinion as to the relative values of, on the exchange. Again, these, this, again, it's received today. The value for the city based upon the appraiser's opinion would be, the city's property is worth forty-eight hundred, the church's fee property is worth five thousand, that's a positive two hundred on, on the part of the city, and that the value of the easements is another twenty-eight hundred dollars. So the proposed exchange would be for forty-eight hundred dollars worth of city property, for five thousand dollars worth of church property, plus easements valued at twenty-eight hundred. The map in the packet explains the proposed exchange. Their, the fee title, by way of background, the church was basically seeking to replace their sign, which is in the, in the property owned by the city. The, because the property serves as Twenty-Fifth Street and has a deed restriction to that effect, the process to remove that deed restriction, making it a street, was satisfied by going through the street vacation process. So that process has not yet reached conclusion, the second reading of that ordinance is on this agenda. And once the property was relieved of that street restriction or limitation, the property would be owned in fee by the city and then available for exchange. However, the conditions of the proposed ordinance on the vacation would restrict the use of that property to, by burdening the property with easements, benefiting the property to the north, the property to the south, the city's property to the east, as well as to the, the church property. Then the city would exchange this burdened property with the church, and obtain what is proposed to be approximately five thousand square foot property on the north, I'm sorry, the southeast corner of the, of the church parcel. And that proposed use could be for either housing or for park use. And that the access easements, which I alluded to, would increase the access frontage to the city's RM zone parcel, both from the unbuilt Northeast Quay Avenue, as well as from the, the property here, which is subject to the vacation, Twenty-Fifth Street. So again, the, there are proposed findings, again, not trying to dictate what the decision should be, but just to guide where the analysis should go. If you're going to give up an interest in city property or fee interest, you need to make, you need to have this hearing under two-two-one seven-two-five, and you need to make findings that the proposed exchange furthers the public interest, or if the property is needed for public use, that we receive equal or better value. Again, we've never, to my knowledge, relinquished city property without getting at least equal value, so my recommendation is always to find both, that it furthers the public interest and that you receive equal or better value. And so- And so, based on the appraisal information, it appears at least that the values provided by the appraiser would be in the city's benefit, and you can decide whether or not their proposal to provide improved access to the city and to provide a lot for what could be either housing or some future park development, because it's adjacent to the park facility there, you can determine whether or not that furthers the public interest. I'd ask that you conduct the public hearing and hear the public input, and then decide to go forward from there.
Thank you. I didn't have anyone signed up to speak on this issue. Is there anyone present who would like to speak about this land exchange? There's no further testimony. Is there a motion to close the public hearing in the record?
So moved. Second?
Been moved and seconded to close the public hearing in the record. Any discussion? Any possible items we might want to include in the record before we close it? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Public hearing's closed, and the record's closed. What's the pleasure of the council?
Your Honor, Counsel, there's, there are some blanks in the proposed findings. So, if you come to a tentative decision, any direct staff, we can complete those findings and prepare it for your final sign-off at the next meeting. This exchange, I failed to mention, also has conditions, as the other two. There is a slight modification. This one has a real probability that you will need to do some kind of partition or subdivision, probably just a partition, to create the 5,000 square foot lot at issue. So, that, with that clarification, that would be an additional condition. It's listed there, but I just wanted to point it out.
Madam Chair, I think this is, we would all agree, this has been a long and laborious process to help the church get a new sign. And, you know, I think we've, we're on the last leg. Seems to be an equitable exchange, certainly for the public good benefits, city, already city-owned property to the north, and provides another piece next to the ballparks for either park or housing. So, I think it's a good gain for the public entity, being the city, and provides the church with its desired outcome as well.
I would agree with you.
You're here.
Good job by Mr. Appicello, our staff.
Following through, I see that city council passed a motion last November to start this process. Um...
Did I mention long and laborious?
Yes, you did.
Well, I would like to make that motion. I know, it's like I do one a year. Years are running out.
Which motion?
You're moving...
I said a motion.
Yeah.
I would move that we go ahead and go through with that.
Direct staff.
To bring back findings.
Bring back findings.
This would be for final, it's a tentative decision now, and you'll have a final order to sign at the next meeting.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to direct staff to bring back findings in order at the next Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. If I can uncover my agenda? First ordinance on the agenda is second reading of ordinance 2016-14.
Hey, Your Honor, Counsel, this amendment was the VRD license amendment, absent the occupancy, which was removed. So, this would be first reading of an ordinance amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code, Title V, Business Taxes, Licenses, and Regulations, Chapter 5.14, Vacation Rental Dwelling License, adding and clarifying criteria and standards to the VRD license provisions of the code. Ask for approval of first reading and...
I believe we had first reading, second.
I'm sorry, you're right. Ask for approval of second reading and adoption of the ordinance. And I don't believe there'd be any, there have been any changes since the last...
So, first reading, right.
So moved. Second?
Been moved and seconded to approve the second reading of ordinance 2016-14. Any further discussion? Roll call, please. Oh.
Discussion. I guess the, I know we got into this through the, looking at the traveler's accommodation license and its requirements, and then scaled it down and came up with this, absent the occupancy, of which we're dealing with. But even when we were discussing about this, I think, last meeting and doing the first reading, the question for me, again, came up with, you know, the need, was it the right things, what kind of impact it has? And a thought, all I put out there is, I found it hard to bring back ordinances, so I'm wondering about a sunset provision on something like this, that we test it for three years, and see how it works, and then have it come back to council as mandatory to take action, you know, one way or the other, to kill it or to, you know, bless it further. And I guess, you know, what I'm thinking about is all the questions, kind of, we had about the relevancy of Roden, Vector, SPA, and to see how it's working. Three years gives it, you know, a longevity. And maybe, you know, maybe what you do is you want to, you know, go harder, look at the traveler's accommodation license, and modify or remove. But I think councils have a tendency to, you know, put ordinances in place, and, you know, then they either fade away, aren't enforced, and, you know, I think as a trial balloon, I'd just throw that out as food for thought.
So, what exactly are you talking about? I know traveler's accommodation license, but what's your proposal?
It would be easy to, it would, I think, I think you even proposed it at that time, was the, you know, why not just adopt the traveler's, whatever, accommodation license And instead, we came up with this ordinance.
Correct.
I'm not sure this ordinance, you know, does the job, or in fact is overkill. And I'm just wondering if it wouldn't be worth putting a string on it that says it's got to come back in three years to see, to review it?
You're talking about the traveler's accommodation license?
No, this ordinance.
Okay, the ordinance.
The ordinance.
Right.
Because at that point, we may want to, you look harder at, given experience, that maybe the traveler's accommodation is what we need. Maybe what we've found is, you know, we don't need it at all, and so you could kill this ordinance. Wouldn't that be nice, get rid of something that was on the books? But I think what it does, for me anyway, it says, hey, let's give it three years to see how, you know, it works, and what's our track record with it after? And it's my own concerns of, you know, we put ordinances on the books and forget them. And I think, I don't, I have no idea how we would calendar that and bring it back. That would be a staff question. But before we approve this finally, I guess I'm just looking at that kind of provision and what you think of it.
I think that's a very reasonable suggestion.
Counsel? When you're ready. I would, I think there's a couple ways, a couple different ways you can address this point. One, you could pass this ordinance, first and second reading, and adopt it, and then do a separate motion directing the city manager to return in one year, two years, and report on whether or not this ordinance was effective, was not enforced, was enforced, staff time involved. You could do that separately by simply directing the city manager to return and report, and at that time, you could decide to repeal it if it was ineffective, or amend it if you wish to change it. The other way to do this would be to go ahead and on the fly here, just write some new language that we would have to read and enter into the, you know, into the record before it can be effective, basically indicating that this ordinance, one of two ways, shall be reviewed by council two years from the anniversary of its adoption, or three years from anniversary of its adoption. That's just putting into an ordinance something that probably can be calendered by the city manager in terms of a task, but you can do that if you wish to do it. The other way would be to automatically, as was suggested, repeal it or sunset it. And I'd not, I know it's done. It's not particularly, it's not done a lot with local government ordinances. State law oftentimes has provisions that go into effect and require action by legislature to renew it, so that kind of creates the impetus to deal with it again. So, you can, we could try to draft something here on the fly to do that, or you can deal with it as a separate matter. Again, this is VRD licensing, not a land use ordinance, so it does not have to go to the planning commission, doesn't have to jump through all those hoops, so it's more easily considered just by giving direction to the manager to bring it back, and we'll review it in a year or two years.
Can I ask a question about this? Are you talking about the whole ordinance or just the SPA stuff?
No, well, the whole ordinance that we've got in front of us of 2016-14, the health and safety.
Right, but it's got the provision about survivorship, and it's got the change in the quiet hours.
Yeah.
And timely resolution of complaints. I'm wondering if you, if you want, if your intent was to include all of that, or just the things that came out of the traveler accommodation rules?
Just sections three and four, basically.
Yeah, it was trying to, the traveler's accommodation sections that we put in here. So, you're right, three and four. You know, and even section, you know, you look beyond that, and you've got how we handle complaints.
Mm-hmm.
And I guess that's the kind of stuff that we need some experience to see whether, you know, we need to modify it. And I know we talked a lot about those things, so we're kind of riding on the fly, and so I was just trying to think of some way to, you know, force it back.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just wondering, make sure that I understood what you wanted to apply to.
Yeah. No, I think sections one and two are fine, but I don't know. I'd just throw it out for thought. I just am real concerned that, you know, as councils change over, you know, it's, you know, it's hard to pull an ordinance back, has been my experience, and get it reviewed and, you know, challenge staff to, you know, what's the track record on it? So, I'm...
Sure.
And I'm not trying to be, you know, dredge things, you know, forever, but we had a lot of discussion on this, of whether it was even needed. And, you know, I think a track record then kind of provides that and gives you an opportunity to modify with experience record in front of you. That's not a motion, it's just a discussion.
Well, I feel that this topic won't go away, and I think it'll be on people's minds, and I would like to see the city manager come back in two years, one year, and report on what you were asking about.
Well, I'd pick three years, just to, again, you know, give some burn-in time.
Yeah.
I don't, one would be way too early, you know, by the time you get two, that's what, I just pick three to...
I mean, with one, you haven't even passed the ordinance, have you? So...
But I, I'm, you know, and I'm not wedded on it, by any means, I'd just throw it out as a thought.
I think that's a good reminder.
But I don't think it's a topic that will go away.
So, don't need to create...
I think we could put past, as Mr. Appicello suggested, pass a separate motion that directs the city manager to return with a report, you know, on this, on those sections in three years. I don't think, I don't see why we would want to put it into the ordinance.
Okay.
Fine.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for the comments.
I'm neutral. I'll go whichever way the tide goes.
So, I guess we're ready for a second reading? We're ready for the, ready for the vote, yeah. Thank you. Ward?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Norakas?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
And Walke?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Madam President, I would make a motion that we direct the city manager to return to us three years from the effective date of this ordinance, to give a report to council on sections three and four of the ordinance.
Second?
Been moved and seconded to direct the city manager to return in three years with a report on sections three and four of this ordinance. Any further discussion? All right, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is second reading of ordinance 2016-24.
Counsel, given the fact that we have postponed the, done a tentative findings, but directed that the final findings be returned on the 12th, I'd ask that you continue second reading on ordinance 2016-24 to... on ordinance 2016-24 to December 12th.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to continue second reading of ordinance 2016-24 to December 12th, 6 o'clock this location.
What are we missing on that? Madam Chair?
The final findings of fact, conclusions of law and order--
Oh.
--on the Saint James.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
This is the vacation, and the other is the land exchange, and it would be nice to wrap them all up--
It would.
--at the same time. Okay? So those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Next item is first reading of ordinance 2016-26.
Your honor, council, since the item was discussed under deliberations and you gave direction for revision for first reading, I'd ask that you continue first reading of ordinance 2016-26 to the December 12th meeting.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to continue first reading of ordinance 2016-26 to December 12th, 2016, 6 o'clock PM this location. Discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Next item is first reading of ordinance 2016-27.
Your honor, council, this item, like the previous exchange, relates to something else on the agenda, which you have not finally approved, the final findings. You can proceed and adopt this ordinance, but you would essentially be rezoning city-owned property, you know, subject to, or land exchange that may or may not occur. So I would recommend that you postponed first reading of ordinance 2016-27 to the December 12th meeting.
So moved. Second.
Been moved and seconded to postpone or to continue, I'm sorry, to postpone first reading of ordinance 2016-27 to December 12th, 2016, 6 o'clock PM this location. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Resolutions, none. Special Order of Business, none. City manager report?
I'll make sure that report gets on the city manager's calendar three years.
Thank you.[1325.23][1325.23](laughing) Thank you. Thank you for filling in for the city manager tonight, Chief Killian. And city attorney report?
Counsel, I, I just want to apprise you the fact that Airbnb had submitted an agreement to the city to where they would agree to collect TRT on behalf of their clients. Talking to the tax administrator, who is your finance director, we don't have any similar agreement with other internet providers of booking, booking agents. And so I'm just letting you know that we've communicated to them that although we had scheduled it to be on this agenda, the tax administrator is responsible for collecting the taxes and doesn't feel that we need a separate agreement. We don't have a separate agreement with any of the other providers. So they, that has been communicated to them. I simply wanted to apprise you that, that that had occurred. Aside from that, I have nothing else.
Thank you.
But you do have, and I have adhered to, any actions based on executive sessions, which you might want to--
Thank you. I believe there were a couple of motions.
Yeah, I'd make a motion as counsel to authorize myself, Councilor Anderson, to, to discuss with the Taft School, Lincoln County School Board and their superintendent regarding the old Taft School property.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to direct Counselor Anderson to--
Discuss with Lincoln County--
Discuss Lincoln County School District Board and Superintendent regarding the, the property at the south end of town identified as Taft Park. Any discussion?
I'd just like to thank Counselor Anderson for taking that on.
Yes, I agree. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Thank you, Counselor Anderson, for stepping forward.
I have another motion regarding the executive session, and that is to reject the Agnes Creek offer and direct staff to explore possible partnership opportunities for purchasing that property. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to direct staff to reject the counteroffer on the Agnes Creek property and to explore partnership options. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Should this be a roll call vote?
Well, you're not spending money--
Not, okay. Those, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you. All right, additional comments from citizens present on non-agenda items? Anyone wish to speak? Resident or non-resident?[1558.83][1558.83](laughing) Thank you. Announcements or comments by city council?
I guess I have one.
Yes, Mr. Ward?
Yeah, I had an opportunity to spend some time with Chief Killian, and, and you just finished a course with the--
Yes.
--Police Department. Would you mind saying what that was about?
I was a graduate of the inaugural class of the Citizens Police Academy. It was very informative, very rewarding, and I thank Chief Killian and the Police Department for presenting that course. And I look forward to many more graduates in the future. I hope that we can get another class together for next year.
Yeah, we'll be putting that on annually, generally in the fall of every year and stuff. But the reason why Susan Walkie and some of the others were handpicked is to basically, this was our inaugural session, like she mentioned. It was to give us very strict criticism to perfect the class materials and stuff for future classes and stuff. So I appreciate your input on the subject matters, too.
So while I'm buttering up--[1643.83][1643.83](laughing) Butter up some more. Anyway, I plan on taking that, and I've also taken advantage of, which anyone can do, riding around with the police on their, on their rounds. And, you know, the way things are going, it's difficult times, and I think we need to understand that, that the job that the police do, that none of us would do, no matter how much it paid us. And so I, for one, am very grateful to have the police force that we have, and I would encourage anyone, if they see a cop, I give them a wave. It's okay, I okayed it with Keith.[1683.83][1683.83](laughing) Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you for the acknowledgement.
I just want to add that a ride along with a police officer in car is very interesting, but so is a sit-along with the dispatchers. So if you have an opportunity to do that, that's also very interesting. My only comment tonight was to ask about the status of applications for volunteer positions. We have many positions that are open. Have we been receiving some applications?
Yes, we have received actually quite a few in the last few days, so--
Great.
--they'll be coming forward.
Good news, because a lot of these positions expire at the end of the year. All right, any other comments? Meeting's adjourned.